I'd like to welcome you all to our school board meeting today, May 15, 2018. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you all and to say that if you are interested in speaking during our hearing of citizens, to please pick up a card in the back of the room, print your name and topic legibly and clearly, and return that card to our board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I'll call you up to speak. Let's now stand and do our flag salute under the direction of Sarasota High School color guard and the direction of Sergeant Fulpus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Beverly Gerard, Director of Food and Nutrition, to the podium. Mrs. Gerard will also be discussing the summer feeding collaboration between Sarasota County
all.
Schools and All Face Food Bank. Beverly?
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to all of the board members and to all of the -- our big audience today, a lot of people here this afternoon. I do have a presentation, and so we're going to go ahead with our PowerPoint this afternoon. I thought I'd try a little something different this year for our annual report and really show you how we compare in Sarasota County's Food and Nutrition Services program to different restaurants in the area. As you can see, there are 16 McDonald's in Sarasota County, three Chipotles, six Pernera, 10 Domino's, seven Taco Bell, but there are 53 sites for Food and Nutrition Services. So we definitely are the largest chain in the area. This is a very busy slide, I know, but I'll just give you a quick rundown. We have over 42,000 students in our school district, and at a certain point, we were starting to see a decrease in our free and reduced percentages, but we're back up now to 53.42% of our students actually eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. We serve over 28,000 meals daily, and we served during the Hurricane Irma aftermath, over 33,000 meals daily. Again, we're in 53 sites, and I think it's important to note that we have nine distinct menus every day of the school year, every single day. Our budget is over $20 million. Our payroll alone is $8.7 million, and our purchased food is about $7.5. Each of these programs represent a different federal program. We have a National School Breakfast Program, National School Lunch Program. Those are both under the USDA. Our supper program is actually administered by the Department of Health. So we have a number of different programs with varying federal guidelines, and it's important for us to keep all of that in mind. We have a lot going on in our department. Right now, we're preparing for summer school. I'll talk about that in a moment. I'd like you to take a quick look at this slide. The middle slide actually indicates the type of information that's available to our parents on Nutrislice. This gives a nutrient breakdown, a brief explanation of each of the dishes we serve, and there are actual photos of foods we serve here in Sarasota County. You'll also see on our Nutrislice app that we can and do provide menus in different languages. Here we have listed English, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Russian. I can only read two of those. I can't read the others. Some of you attended, some of you board members attended, and Superintendent Bowden, you attended our Chefs Move to School event this last year at Pine View, where we work with local chefs, including the likes of Paul Madison, Steve Phelps from Indigenous Restaurant, a number of our different chefs who are engaged with our students to create recipes that we actually end up using in the National School Lunch Program. This is my staff on the front row, and most all of us worked during Hurricane Irma. So that was a big deal. There I am in my Purdue shirt in the top left-hand corner after 60 hours at Tatum Ridge. Note to all ladies, take your makeup and your bag with you to a hurricane shelter. That's a good thing, because you never know when a picture may be taken. And the deputy standing next to me is Deputy Carrillo. We also had National Guard assistance. The three young men in the middle are two sons of Natalie Von Suskle, and then the third is Jana Roberts' son. And we had family members, we had all sorts of volunteers helping us throughout the entire activation. I would like you to know that we have seven registered dietitians on staff. We have more. Is it not really on? Oh, did I mess it up?
No. Try now.
Is that better? Just keep talking? Okay. We have seven registered dietitians on staff. That's more in a school district than any other school district in the United States that's our size. Most school districts are lucky to have one RD on staff, most have none. So we have not only the food service management aspects covered in Sarasota County, but also the science of nutrition. We also host the only school district-based dietetic internship in the nation. Dietetic internships are typically held in teaching hospitals and extended university programs, but we started an internship program a number of years ago, and we have graduated young people that are now in positions of authority in child nutrition all over the United States. We thought it was important to include this little slide, too, because Sarah Woods is our manager at Gulf Gate, and she was just named the School-Related Employee of the Year for Sarasota County and is one of the top five finalists for the state. And she'll find out tomorrow if she's going to be the winner for the state, and we believe she will be. So keep printing your thoughts at 9:00 tomorrow. Thank you. I'll pass the word along that you all send her best wishes. We'd like to point out, again, these are pictures of real food that we serve at school. We're not just school food, we're great food served at school. That's a big distinction. And let me tell you why. We have a huge farm-to-school program. We partner with some amazing farmers in the area, but we're also working with the students at MacIntosh Middle School. Dave Guatney is the ag teacher there, and he is providing, he with the students, is providing the greens and the salads and so forth for our salad bars at MacIntosh. This is a summary of the grants we've received for Farm-to-School since 2013. So you can see, we have received a fair amount of grant funding just for this program alone, and we have another $100,000 grant pending with the USDA for next year. Jones Potato Farm is one of our biggest and longest supporters. Every spring, we serve Jones Potato Farm potatoes, essentially from Valentine's Day through Mother's Day, just about. And huge supporters, Alan and Leslie Jones. We have another young couple, and I want to go ahead and read their quote, because I think it's so important. This is Sarah Wannell and Mike Baker, and they say, "As Sarasota County Schools graduates, we take pride in growing premium-quality produce for Sarasota County residents, most notably our youngest customers currently in Sarasota County schools. The journey from growing a few cases of lettuce for seven schools to now supplying 1/3 of the district's overall lettuce demand to all schools has allowed Homestead Hydroponic Farm to increase growing capacity by adding 5,000 square feet of greenhouse space and environmental controls, which ultimately extends our growing season. We sincerely appreciate the business partnerships we maintain with Sarasota County Schools, Food and Nutrition Services, and look forward to many productive years of a farm-to-school partnership." That's a win-win for our school district and for our community, especially with young people getting involved in business like that. As you can see, I'm going over a lot of material today. I'm trying to make this as brief as possible. We have a lot here, though. We have our summer feeding getting ready again for 2018, but in 2017, we served over 55,000 breakfasts. We served 114,000 lunches, and we were in 50 locations. My boss, Scott Limpie, said that I should mention, and I think I should, that the vast majority of our summer feeding sites are not in schools. They're in different agencies, they're in the Boys and Girls Club, all sorts of parks and recreation facilities and so forth. I'd also like to introduce to you, because as we're talking about the summer feeding program, Colleen Reinhardt, would you please stand? Colleen is the Strategic Program Officer with All Face Food Bank, and we have had a partnership now with All Face Food Bank for our summer feeding program for five years. This is our 21st, 21st year of the summer feeding program in Sarasota County. It's our fifth year of partnering with the food bank, and it is a beautiful partnership. We're spending $25 million this year, correct? We're spending $25 million this year, it appears, on safety and security measures. But we thought it's very important for us to point out the safety and security measures we take in Food and Nutrition Services every single day. If you have not heard from Michael Andreas, our Director of Security, he calls our children "the innocent, the collected, and unprotected." We call our children "our most vulnerable population" when it comes to food safety. So we take those initiatives very, very seriously. Our managers and administrators in our department are Serve Safe certified, so that we make sure that we're providing a safe environment for food production. So when you think of food, when you think of safety and security, I think it's important to remember what facility services does with air quality and initiatives like that, what transportation does with their training drivers before they can even go on the road, and definitely what we do in Food and Nutrition Services on a daily basis. We serve, as you can see, thousands and thousands of meals every day, and we haven't had a food outbreak, knock on wood, in my entire time I've been here, and I've been here since '91. So we take it pretty seriously. Our local wellness policy, we have two meetings a year, and we have a new wellness policy assessment tool. Here are some of the initiatives that we have been following with our Wellness Champs out in the schools. So the Wellness Champs are helping with flu shot clinics, jump rope for heart, mileage and run clubs, health screenings, sub-challenges. It's a really busy, busy initiative. Our two nutrition educators, Darla and Caroline, work with parents. It's almost unbelievable how many special diets we have here in Sarasota County, whether it's a diabetic child or a person who has whatever kinds of needs, a food allergy. We're working with individual parents and individual students to meet their needs. So we also require an update annually by a physician, and we take that responsibility seriously as well. This is something new I'm adding this year, simply because we had a tough year this year. We had a very tough year in Food and Nutrition Services. We, I like to be well-known for the financial solvency of our department, but I have to be honest, things happen. So instead of you hearing it from someone else, school board, I'd rather you hear this from me, okay? So Michael Eugene is the immediate past Chief Operations Officer from Orange County Public Schools, and he just moved back to Los Angeles and is now their City Chief Operations Officer. He said the school food service program is one of the most regulated programs in the district. There are numerous procedures and policies in place following USDA and state regulations. The program is audited many times a year by different federal and state agencies. When I was asked to reorganize this department back in 1991, I took to the board at that time a reorganization proposal, and in that reorganization proposal, I listed 10 issues that had the impact, who have a major impact, on the finances of a Food and Nutrition Services department. Seven of those occurred this year. So I'm not going to go over each one, but seven of those did occur this year. The state of Florida, a little background, the state of Florida requires a fund balance not to exceed three months of operating expenses. It's important to point this out, because the Food and Nutrition Services budget, as you know, is not a part of the general operating budget. We're off on a little tangent all by ourselves. So we either make or break it every single year. In September of 2017, we opened shelters at 13 schools. We served over 19,000 people, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We were able to account for $85,000 worth of food costs, but we know it was probably closer to $100,000 to $125,000 for those few days, simply because if you were there, you know how chaotic the environment was. So on top of the food costs that we are not going to regain until FEMA pays back at some point, and typically that's years later, we lost six days of revenue, which is roughly $60,000 a day of revenue in our department. So the total loss was over half a million dollars. In 2017-18, towards the very end of the budget process, we incurred an expense of $255,000 for maintenance and repairs that were previously funded by Facility Services. We had already committed, back in 2016, to replacing three walk-in cooler-freezer combinations at the three sister schools, Sarasota Middle, Laurel and La Comas, and Booker Middle. So we already knew we were budgeting over $1 million for that. Our salaries and benefits, again, I'll refer back to Scott, Scott Limpie. I don't sit at the negotiating table, obviously, but we pay our people whatever has been negotiated. That's wonderful. I love that for our people. I guess I could say the same about food. Whatever happens with Mother Nature and weather and so forth is what happens, and so food costs sometimes are completely out of our control as well. So our department pays all of our salaries and benefits, and the recent pay raise cost over $450,000 in additional expenses. So as you can see, a little summary here of all the somewhat unanticipated expenses we had this year, we incurred an $832,000 loss. So again, I'd rather you hear that from me. Do I think we can make it up next year? I do believe we can. I'm going to pray that we don't have a hurricane, because that was a big expense. And we're going to look at some other ways that we might move some of our expenses around. From a staffing perspective, you all know, as the economy improves, it gets more difficult to find employees. This last year, we posted over 215 job postings, and we filled 97 postings from the, from positions, rather, from all of those postings. The anticipated challenges for 1819 continue to be staffing, uncertain federal funding requirements. One of the things that bothers me the most is some of the information I'm hearing about what may or may not happen to the SNAP program. There's a direct correlation with the SNAP program, in other words, the food stamp program, and the Food and Nutrition Services program. What will happen with food costs and salary increases? We already know we've got a nice salary increase again for 2018, and I told Dr. Bowden the other day, I like it for about one minute, and then I go, oh, my gosh, are we going to pay for this? So we'll do it. And then again, whatever happens to our weather conditions. California has had a difficult past few years, so we'll see what happens again this year. I do want to introduce to you my wonderful staff. This is just a few of the 340 or 50 people we have in our department. If you will please stand. And I just want to thank them, because they are, they work with me, they put up with me every single day. They're amazing, hard workers. I won't introduce each person, but that's the backbone. You're looking at the backbone of our program right there. So we want you to know that we will be taking care of every child every day, whatever it takes. That's what we do in Food and Nutrition Services. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Hello, Dr. Gerard. I'm not going to beat you up about the chocolate milk, because I guess it's a losing battle at this point. But I do want to point out this morning that Scott Limpie gave us a presentation about operations, and he showed us one of his operation tools and how he has metrics for a variety of things. And he has a variety of departments underneath him, as you're very well aware. But when it came time to him wanting to show off the efficiency of a particular department, he could have picked Transportation, Facilities, you know, IT. He could have picked a myriad of departments. The one he picked was you, and he was able to show how much more efficient you are compared to the average, pretty much just about any other. He started clicking on districts of a similar size from Florida. We were, I was just like, no, it's got to be something else. And every criteria that he used, he showed that you were at the top of the game, whether we were talking about cost of food, quality of food. We were actually talking about meals served per labor hour, but you were at the top of the game. And so I just wanted, as a CPA, I just wanted to thank you very much, Dr. Gerard, for not just the quality of the food, but the efficiency with which you deliver it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, too, want to say thank you to your department, because I know what a job you do in feeding our children. And the summer program that you have is excellent, because, yes, you are feeding those children who get hungry, who don't normally have food readily available to them, and we are using those facilities, not at our school district. And I can remember when you started this program, and you said, "We want to facilitate this at other areas and in other places, like churches and other places that children gather in the summer as opposed to in our schools." And I thought, really? And then, of course, that worked really, really quite well, and that's where the children are, so that's where we should go. So I just want to thank you for all you've done. But the job you did in the hurricane was like a really big deal. We have a lot of people who came into our district from Charlotte County, because they do not have enough shelters there. They brought coolers with them with food, because they were not anticipating that they would be fed. And I had such great reactions for so many of the residents that came, in the Northport area in particular, who said, "Wow, this was really a special, special thing," and how well they were treated by our staff and particularly by your staff. So I just want to say, as always, you do great stuff, and this is something that is a very important aspect of our children's education. Next year, we're going to go around and serve maybe a coffee bar and some breakfast things to our high schoolers who don't eat breakfast before they go to class. I don't know what the problem is, but we're going to find some new and creative ways of getting to those students. So we're really looking forward to that. But thank you, thank you, and thank you to your wonderful staff. Great job.
If I may just say something, Mrs. Goodwin serves on our local wellness policy committee, and thank you again for mentioning the food bank and the summer feeding program, because not only do we have the meals served at lunchtime and breakfast, but the food bank does a wonderful job with their mobile pantries and backpack program. And so if anyone would have any questions, that's a question that could be asked of Colleen. Thank you.
Mrs. Zucker?
I think one reason that the children are told to have breakfast in the morning is because they leave the house at 6:15 for high school. I know my grandsons are always complaining. They're up at 5:30 in the morning, and there's no way they care whether they eat or not. So my daughter has fixed that by having a smoothie shake, and they can't leave the house without the smoothie shake. But I want to thank you all. I know the job that you do, and I know it's not an easy job. The first time I served in the Food and Nutrition, they were very smart. They put me on the line collecting money, and if a child did not have any money in his account or have any money to pay them, what happened was that I was told that I couldn't let them take the food through the line and that they weren't going to feed them. Of course, that wasn't true, but I learned a lesson, because the parents who don't sign those receipts for those kids to be able to have free and reduced lunch, it's their fault that the kids don't have lunch. We did not let them go without having lunch. There was always peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, but it was a lifetime learning for me of what to expect and how little our kids sometimes have, to make sure that I was understanding of everything that was going on throughout our entire community. And the pots and pans that you have to lift is unbelievable, and to wash them, and to get the hot stuff out with gloves on and burn your arms. Taco Day is a phenomenal day with, you can reach your hands up and put all the stuff on it. But I have a blast every time I do it, because your people are special. They are so warm and inviting. They always make me feel good. They make me feel like I'm doing something good.
Thank you for mentioning the fact that we never let a child go through the line without a meal. We never allow that. We are allowed to do that by the state. We have not allowed that for years.
No.
Not for years.
I know. That was just a lesson for me.
Thank you.
That was good. Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown?
You know, I want to agree with what my colleagues have said. You've got a phenomenal program, and, yeah, making us work one day a year shows us exactly how much you all do. But I think it was also important to show that the Food and Nutrition Service is something that is self-supporting. Your employees are all paid through that, and that's, that's a lot. And, I mean, if you were just doing that, all those meals, all those employees, that's, that's a big, big job. And then to be able to do it and go out and get all these partners in our community to bring in the food and even the changing the formula for the chocolate milk, to bring it under the sugar levels and whatnot. It is just amazing what you do, and I know you've got There was always peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. But it was a lifetime learning for me of what to expect, and how little our kids sometimes have, to make sure that I was understanding of everything that was going on throughout our entire community. And the pots and pans that you have to lift is unbelievable. And to wash them, and to get the hot stuff out with gloves on, and burn your arms. And Taco Day is a phenomenal day with, you can reach your hands up and put all the stuff on it. But I have a blast every time I do it. Because your people are special. They are so warm and inviting. They always make me feel good. They make me feel like I'm doing something good.
Thank you for mentioning the fact that we never let a child go through the line without a meal. We never allow that. We are allowed to do that by the state. We have not allowed that for years.
No.
Not for years and years.
I know. That was just a lesson for me.
Thank you.
That was good. Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown.
You know, I want to agree with what my colleagues have said. You've got a phenomenal program. And, yeah, making us work one day a year shows us exactly how much you all do. But I think it was also important to show that the Food and Nutrition Service is something that is self-supporting. Your employees are all paid through that, and that's a lot. And, I mean, if you were just doing that, all those meals, all those employees, that's a big, big job. And then to be able to do it and go out and get all these partners in our community to bring in the food, and even changing the formula for the chocolate milk, to bring it under the sugar levels and whatnot. It is just amazing what you do. And I know you've got, you know, farmers out there that are singing your praises. And weren't you, won an award last year, was it the year before, for Food and Nutrition? We were getting...
I can't remember. I won a few.
Yeah, you've, I know you've won a few. You won national, I mean, you just do a great thing and for us. And again, you know, how you all pitched in during Irma, and served all those meals, and, you know, took care of those people 24/7 while they were there.
I want to say too, that we know that we have a supportive school board. Don't we, guys? We know that we do, and that makes a big difference, because we feel that we are secure in making good decisions on behalf of our community and our school kids.
Well, we're there behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to invite James Slaton, District Athletic Director, to the podium for the next presentation.
All right. We've come together today to recognize an amazing accomplishment by one of our very own, by Sarasota High's Jossiel Torres. Jossiel just recently won the FHSAA 4A State Championship in the high jump. And typically, when you see guys like winning state high jumps, those are guys that are 6'5", 6'6", 6'7". When he stands up in a minute, you'll see this amazing feat that he did. He jumped over seven feet. He was a back-to-back state champion, so he won last year. We recognized him in the fall for winning last spring. So, back-to-back. And he's also a very strong student. I want to thank Dr. Bowden and the board for recognizing our student athletes. You know, a lot of times, in a lot of districts, it goes unnoticed, some of these amazing accomplishments. And we like to say that athletics are not life, but it's the way that we teach life principles. So without athletics, for a lot of our young men and women, they would not have these opportunities to grow as student athletes. I'd also like to thank Sarasota Principal David Jones and Athletic Director Mark Aschenbrenner, who do a phenomenal job supporting athletics at Sarasota High School. And also thank Coach Ed Serra, the track coach at Sarasota High, for his leadership and direction. And if he would come up at this time.
So this is Jossiel. He's been with the track team for three years now. He came out as a sophomore. He was lazy as a freshman, didn't do anything, so he could have won. Maybe another one. He's a great student, 3.5 or better. He's going to get his ace diploma, which is like IB, if you're from Rurue. He's going to the University of North Florida on a full scholarship. He's been the number-one jumper in the state of Florida the last two years. And right now, he's number six in the country. He qualified for, in high school sports now, it used to be you could compete in five events, but now they've switched the rules, so you can only compete in four events. And he actually qualified for the state championship in all four events. So, I think he's the only one in our area that qualified in all four of their events. Like Mr. Slaton said, I would like to thank our administration for all our support. And I would also like to thank Booker High School. They allow us to go there to practice, because he can't jump. We have an asphalt track, and he would probably kill himself if he tried to jump on an asphalt track. So Booker High School and their administration allows us to go there and practice when we need to, which has been a big help. So, hopefully someday, we'll get a rubber track, won't have to travel much. But he's a great young man, comes from a very good family. And hopefully, he'll be in the NCAA Championships next year. He's top 35 of all college jumpers right now. So, we'll see.
Jossiel, if you could come up here. I just want to put it in perspective for everybody. I'm standing at 6'5" right now, so by his power alone, at seven and a half inches to me, and that is what he cleared, just with these legs, this body, his talent and skill. So it's, it is, to me, it's a miracle accomplishment. And we're so proud of what you've done for our community, our school. Way to go. We look forward to a great future for you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
And that wraps up our special presentations. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Bowden.
So you may recognize some of the young men sitting in the front row here, because they have represented Sarasota County on multiple occasions. Matter of fact, they have a bit of a reputation around the state. I would say, a very positive reputation. So what I'd like to do is ask their instructor, Joel Kaplan, the engineering technology teacher at Brookside Middle School. And what you have in front of you is their TSA team. Now, the last time I visited Brookside, they had just come back from state competition. And they had a bot who was pretty dominant at state competition. And I was a bit surprised that they had decided, as a group, that that bot was no longer good enough, and that they were going to build from scratch a new robot to go and compete at Worlds. And so I'm not going to steal Mr. Kaplan's thunder, but needless to say, I left Brookside a little concerned that we would take a bot that was dominant at the state and park him in favor of a bot who had never competed before. So you want to pick the story up there, Mr. Kaplan?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Bowden, members of the board. I'm Joel Kaplan, technology teacher and VEX Robotics Advisor at Brookside Middle School. My programs have been brought in front of you many times over the past six years that I've been here in Sarasota. Brookside has won many state and national titles in robotics and with Technology Student Association, including being awarded National TSA 2016-2017 Florida Program of the Year, and myself being named Florida TSA Advisor of the Year. But today, I'm here to tell you about one amazing group of robotic students. Brookside Team 6105C, RAW XD, the number-one middle school in the state of Florida, two years in a row. When I call your name, please step forward. Quinn Coomer, Armon Segay, Cannon Spencer, Rafael Tremino Bravo, and Andreas Zeitler.
There we go. Okay.
These middle school students have done what no other middle school students have done. They have won every award possible in competition this year. These awards include Judges Award, Build Award, Design Award, Skills Award, Tournament Champions, and Excellence Award winners, the highest award given in VEX Robotics. Okay, I'd like to stop this a moment and show you this slide. This slide was taken at Florida State Competition, where the best teams in the state of Florida compete to obtain a world, a spot at World Competition. If you notice, these boys are standing there with three banners. Okay? They have won the Excellence Award, Tournament Champion, and Skills Award. And this is some of the awards that they received during the year. This five, this group of five very different individuals have become one very distinct team when they come together. And at the Florida State Conference, they left everybody else in the dust. Because of their record, the team was invited to and competed at the U.S. Open Championship and in Council Bluffs, Iowa. The team finished seventh in overall in skills rankings. They went on to be one of the few teams to make it to the semifinals. And, Mr. Bow, Dr. Bowden, when you were at Brookside, you asked us to bring back the hardware. Here we are. Design Award at U.S. Open Robotics, the second-highest award given in robotics. And also, at the U.S. Open Robotics, I was named Robotics Teacher of the Year. Thank you. After the U.S. Open, the team traveled to Louisville, Kentucky, to compete at VEX World Competition. At VEX World Competition, there were teams from 68 different countries. In the qualifiers for middle school, there were 184 teams in two divisions, 92 teams in each division. We went 6-4 in qualifying rounds, losing one of those matches to the eventual World Champions. After 10 qualifying matches, we were seeded 22nd. During alliance selection, we were 14th alliance out of 16. We upset the third-ranked alliance in the round of 16 and moved into the quarterfinals. If we had won that match, we would have only been two wins away from being in the final game, and three matches away from being World Champions. But Brookside Middle School Team 6105C is ranked 12th. That's right, 12th in the world for robotic skills. And this did not come with hard work and many hours, with teams spending days and nights in school, sometimes till 11 o'clock at night. And Dr. Bowden was there and wanted to know how these students would bring a new robot to competition, and that's how they did it. Time and dedication. Now, the hardest part of getting these teams to these prestigious competitions is not the works of the students, but the costs of these competitions. Some registrations up to $1,000. Flights, hotel, car rentals, transporting the robot, and everything else needed for competitions. This year, the team had to raise $20,000 in less than two months to get to these competitions. I'm asking the board to find ways to allocate some money for teams like this, and teachers and parents who cannot fundraise like I have. And when, the last time I was here, Dr. DeBille spoke to you about competitions going from Louisville to overseas. Last night, I received an invitation. And Brookside Team 6105C is the only team in the state of Florida that's been invited to compete in Wuhan, China. So that's the reputation that these boys have. Gentlemen, would you turn the robot on? Show us what it can do. Now, every year, the competition changes. And every time the competition changes, the robot has to change. This year, it was a matter of picking up movable goals, picking up cones, stacking them, going over bars, and scoring as many points as possible. Now, when you talk about IB schools, which Brookside is an IB school, these students have a chance to meet, become friends with, talk with students from all over the world. On one side of us was Saudi Arabia. On the other side of us was Colombia. And then every team that we competed against in the competitions. Now, when you go to competition, part of it is to make new friends, to make alliances from all over the world. And in doing so, booths are set up to show where you're from, and gifts are given out to other teams. Quinn, would you get some of the things that we give out to the teams? And please pass them around to the board members. Now, if you let them, they'll go on for the rest of the night. The question was asked, "Where are these boys going to high school?" Well, this team has decided to stay together. They're all going together as a team to Suncoast Polytech. Dr. Bowden, board members, thank you for having us here.
Mrs. Brown.
You know, I'm always amazed when you all come here and show us this. People don't understand the kind of work that we actually do. And to think, I mean, I know this would have been beyond me when I was going to high school. I mean, we weren't doing this, well, of course, we weren't doing this back when I went to high school. I mean, we were still rolling rocks up a hill. But, you know, this kind of work, I mean, we're looking at, you know, they'd be happy to be doing this in college, but, you know, or even in high school, but that we're starting these robotics and engineering programs in middle school. And hats off to you, Mr. Kaplan, I mean, Teacher of the Year. I mean, that's wonderful. But I saw on one of the slides, the tech expectations. And you had a list of expectations that you expected your students to do. And I didn't see the other list. But you've got expectations of your class. And obviously, they're meeting those expectations, if not exceeding them.
They are succeeding in every way.
And, you know, these kids are not going to get out of college and not know what to do. I mean, they're going to go in, they're going to be looking at a college that's going to expand what they already know. And they will be way above most of their peers when they get to college, because of what we've given them here, and what you've given them. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown. I'm sorry, Mrs. Goodwin.
Wow. I just think this is remarkable. Now, Mr. Kaplan, do you get to go to Suncoast Polytech with them? But I'm sure you'll have some interaction with them. That's great. Well, we wish you all the best of luck. And we'll be looking at what you're doing at Suncoast Polytech. It's a great school, and we know that you're going to have a great life. will be sitting with the board at both the workshop on policy discussion and the board meeting itself that evening. That concludes the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I feel like I apologize for my tardiness, but I feel as though I came at the right time to see some very exciting work and see a trophy. So congratulations. I think that the FAFSA completion rate is so important. There's millions of dollars that were left on the table, and I'm really, really happy to see us continue that effort. Moving on to hearing of citizens. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the time flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you will need to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with a speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. I have a number of cards, so I will call up the first name and then say who's up on cue. So I have Pamela Gavett up first, and after that, Bear Mancini.
Hi, board members, thank you so much. I saw most of you this morning during the workshop, so in between the workshop and this board meeting, this is what I've got so far. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, this year, Terry's ninth-grade triplets will take State College of Florida's Gateway English Courses, ENC 1101, 1102, online. If allowed to continue, they'll graduate high school with an AA degree, saving their family $126,000. That's $42,000 each student for a public in-state university. Your discussion today is destroying their hope, because next year, when they are sophomores, the classes could potentially be removed from them and not available any longer. While this doesn't seem to concern some on the board, it's a big concern to the triplets and to the many other children like them. Let me show you my daughter Zoe's plan. So those were passed out, I believe, Kathy. You should have a transfer, it says UF, at the top. So our journey started at the University of Florida when Zoe saw this transfer paper. And we met with the College of Agriculture and Life Science, which is the second paper that you have there, and it demonstrates all the prerequisite courses for her to be guaranteed admissions to the University of Florida, saving our family $42,000. And then if you'll turn the page one more time, you'll see a progression plan that we created for Zoe in eighth grade as a Pineview student. You'll notice that there are eight Advanced Placement courses in her schedule, certainly not exactly trying to skirt by, as discussed this morning at the workshop. So are there any questions about that? Okay. So, Mrs. Brown, it would be the next sheet, like where you would be able to see? So Advanced Placement offers equivalencies for a college degree, for an associate's degree specifically. And you'll notice that those college course codes are listed on Zoe's plan. So whether she's taking those courses at SCF or taking them at Pineview School, she is guaranteed that she gets the credit as a dual enrollment, whereas opposed with an AP course, she has to wait, take the exam, and get the score back to move forward with the other classes. Notice that without these gateway courses of ENC 1101, 1102, in the pre-junior years, available either on campus or online, Zoe would not be able to obtain her associate's degree. Your current discussion doesn't affect Zoe, because she's a junior, but it would affect many others that deserve the same opportunity as Zoe.
Thank you. Bear Mancini? And after that, and forgive me. I am having a hard time reading that.
Good afternoon, school board member. Can you hear me, or should I be closer? My name is Bear Mancini, and I am a student at Pineview School. Please vote nay to the lying, profiteering real estate cartel called Pinecrest Academy. I would elaborate on that, but we only have three minutes. My school, Pineview, is in danger. We need your help. We are being bullied. South College of Florida, or SCF, has accused our teacher and students of cheating, questioned our, quote, "exceptionally high" test scores, and sullied our reputation as the number-one school in Florida. They have yanked most dual-moment classes out from under us and demanded that we replace our Pineview teacher with an SCF teacher of their choice. Why? Why so suddenly? Why us? Well, I hear SCF has its own high school, the SCF Collegiate School, with SCF college courses that allow students to achieve their associate's degree during high school with their diploma. They already have one in Bradenton and are opening one in Venice. So this school could be some of Pineview's biggest competition. Wait, no, because SCF has conveniently pulled the plug on the courses Pineview students need for the associate degree program on Pineview campus. Just to be clear, they come up with outrageous accusations to shut down the students of our program, just when they're looking for students for their new program. This is definitely more than a coincidence, more than underhanded competition, this is bullying. Now, SCF is demanding we use their teacher for our last remaining dual-moment math class. The SCF teacher has no reason for the Pineview Dual-Moment Program to succeed, and every reason to want and ensure that we fail. Pineview doesn't get a say in who that teacher will be, but you do. You, the school board, could review the SCF teacher to ensure we get someone whom favors education over profit and politics. I'm asking you to step up and protect your students. Some of my best friends will be in that class next year. They are really dedicated students, but they can't succeed if they are being bullied by SCF. So I ask you this: Will you stand up by the number-one school in Florida and stand up to SCF?
Just for the record, I am a registered professional engineer. I'm also a registered professional surveyor in the state of Florida. I have been a resident of Sarasota County for the past 32 years, and a business owner in Sarasota County for the past 32 years. I am here this afternoon to speak on item 32, approval or denial of the charter school application for Pinecrest Academy-Gulf Coast. And my concern is that I am totally opposed to this charter school being approved, and I'll tell you why. I have four children that attended the Sarasota County Schools. All of my children are college graduates, my two youngest, which are, have a master's degree. I am a strong supporter of the Sarasota County School System, and I have been for the past 37 years that I've lived here. And I do not want to see our Sarasota County tax dollars diverted to charter schools. I think our Sarasota County School System needs all of the dollars, tax dollars, that it can get. And I have been a strong supporter of the referendum bond issue since its inception, and I think everyone in Sarasota County has to admit that we strongly support our Sarasota County Schools, and we will continue to do that. But we do not want those tax dollars to take and be diverted to a charter school that's a for, not only that, that charter school is a for-profit school, and that in turn, I think, is exactly the reason that it should be turned down. I think we need to stay with the quality education that we have in Sarasota County and our school, and our Sarasota County Schools. I have the opinion we have some of the best teachers in the country, and our schools are rated as one of the best in the United States. Pineview is rated number one in the state of Florida, and it's rated number 10, 10th in the United States. And consequently, as I say, I'm just totally opposed to your approval of this charter school application for Pinecrest Academy-Gulf Coast. And with that, I will also say I have some very serious reservations on Sarasota Schools, but I've been told that has to be diverted to another time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we can do the jazz hands. Next is Martha Carl Lovitz. I apologize if I butcher anyone's name here. And after that, will be Matt Woodall.
Hello, and you did pronounce my name correctly. I'm Martha Carl Lovitz. I live in Venice, Florida, and I'm speaking in opposition to item number 32 on your agenda. Like many retirees, my decision about moving to Sarasota County wasn't made because of the public school system here, but it sure helped. I'm here today as president of Suncoast NEA Retired. We represent retired educators from other states that now live and vote in Sarasota and Manatee Counties. Some of our members are substitutes and are volunteers in the Sarasota District. All of us continue our commitment and interest in having great public schools for every child. I'm here to speak in opposition to the application by Academica for a private charter school. My main question is why? Sarasota County School System consistently rates as one of the top school districts in the state. Why turn over public tax dollars and the management of any school to a private, for-profit entity? I have only had a chance to briefly review the Charter Review Committee's final evaluation of this application, but I share their concern about several things. It appears that the applicant did not do a very good job to research and understand the demographics of Sarasota County. Based on the CRC review, the curriculum they proposed is not especially innovative. There is significant research that shows that private charter schools do no better than public schools when all factors are equal. The CRC report raises questions about how students will be selected, as well as how transportation will be provided. I'm a former elementary reading specialist, similar to the coach position described in the application. I taught in a district very similar to Sarasota. I cringed at the intensive acceleration course for reading for grades three to five and the mandatory, because parents are under a signed contract, attendance at after-school and Saturday sessions. There seem to be many questions about curriculum alignment and a lack of knowledge on the part of the applicant on what is currently offered in Sarasota Schools. I'm no expert here, but I'm sure the members of the review committee are. Most importantly, however, from your perspective as a Sarasota County School Board, and from my perspective as a resident of the district, is that the plan presented failed to meet the standards for parent and community involvement? Why should any school in this district be governed by a school board on the east coast of the state? Please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Woodall, and after that, I have Christine Hervig.
Good afternoon, Superintendent and Board. My name is Matt Woodall, 26, 20 Novus Place, Sarasota, Florida, Altavista neighborhood. Since we met last during the joint board meeting and city commission meeting in the city of Sarasota regarding the revision of the inter-local agreement with the closure of school avenue, reduced access and then eventual closure to school avenue, I want to report that I've had a chance to speak with several of my neighbors in the Title Avenue and Wood Street's corridor, who unanimously support the reduced likelihood of an egregious assault on the student body or staff at Sarasota High School. Several of these citizens will be participating in the public process as the city commission and the city of Sarasota moves forward in continuing this discussion, and we look forward to helping them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Hervig, and then on deck is Robin Williams.
Thank you for letting me speak here. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed charter school run by Academica Incorporated. In my view, charter schools have an agenda, and it's not to make, it's not kids, it's cash. And from everything I've read about this group, they're using their cash to enrich themselves, they're real estate developers, and they're using their cash to further their political corporate agendas. And we don't want to spend our tax monies on their, add it to their dark money, to push their legislative agendas that allow them to collect from ours, from us, to push theirs. We just, it would be a circular thing, and I don't, I didn't prepare very coherent remarks, but please vote no on Pinecrest Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Williams, and on deck is Heldon Sutton.
My name is Robin Williams. I'm a retired high school biology teacher. The Sarasota County School Board must reject Pinecrest Academy's charter application. Pinecrest will be run by the for-profit Academica, which controls more than 160 charter schools, with over 50 in Miami Dade alone. Incorporation papers for Pinecrest were signed by Fernando Zuleta, Academica's president. Pinecrest's mailing address is the same Miami address as Academica's corporate headquarters. Pinecrest contacts, Judith Marty and Fernando Barroso, are Academica's administrators. The Pinecrest five-member governing board has a controlling majority of Academica administrators. No degree of separation here between the nonprofit and the profit. Academica's Zuleta family enriches itself by setting up land companies that build or purchase renovated buildings and then lease them back to their charter schools at high monthly rates. Zuleta's management company, Academica, then charges its more than 160-plus charter schools a high per-pupil rate. How have they managed getting away with looting public tax dollars for their charter schools? Academica has friends in high places. State Representative Manny Diaz is Doral College's chief academic officer. Doral is an unaccredited Academica school. Diaz has pushed legislatively to ease rules for charter schools. He's chair of the pre-K through 12 appropriations subcommittee and on the education committee. Doral's former president is none other
Pinecrest's mailing address is the same Miami address as Academica's corporate headquarters. Pinecrest contacts Judith Marty and Fernando Barroso are Academica's administrators. The Pinecrest five-member governing board has a controlling majority of Academica administrators. No degree of separation here between the nonprofit and the profit. Academica's Zuleta family enriches itself by setting up land companies that build or purchase renovated buildings and then lease them back to their charter schools at high monthly rates. Zuleta's management company, Academica, then charges its more than 160-plus charter schools a high per-pupil rate. How have they managed getting away with looting public tax dollars for their charter schools? Academica has friends in high places. State Representative Manny Diaz is Dorrell College's chief academic officer. Dorrell is an unaccredited Academica school. Diaz has pushed legislatively to ease rules for charter schools. He's chair of the pre-K through 12 appropriations subcommittee and on the education committee. Dorrell's former president is none other than the president pro tempore of the Florida Senate, Anatari Flores. Felon and former representative Eric Friesen is Zuleta's brother-in-law. Florida Speaker of the House, Richard Corcoran's wife, founded the charter classical preparatory school. Representative Byron Donalds' wife, Erica, is the founder of another charter in Collier County, which has been seeking expansion into Martin County. Using the roots of concern for bully students, Representative Donalds shepherded Speaker Corcoran's bill on vouchers through the House. As even the Senate Education Appropriations Chair, Don Getz, stated several years ago, the Florida legislature has, quote, "created a real estate scheme for private individuals," unquote. I would add, for these legislators' own financial gain. Clearly, there are conflicts of interest when the same people are running nonprofit charters, the for-profit companies that manage and lease to them, and are in the state government changing the rules to enhance their--
Thank you.
--financial income. Vote down Pinecrest and demand an investigation into the financial web surrounding--
Thank you. Halden Sutton, and on deck is Diane Desenberg.
Hi, members of the board. I'm Hal Sutton, first vice president of the Southwest Florida UAW Retired Workers Council. I retired from Chrysler Corporation after 30 years of working on the assembly line and driving a fork truck, which was the only fun I ever had in there. But America can only be as great as the level of education of our general public, of our nation's general public. And private business operations have one purpose and one purpose only, and that is to make a profit with whatever they're doing. And public education and government services should not be real in the hands. Taxpayer-funded government services should not be in the hands of profiteers whose only purpose is to make a profit. And educating our nation's children and adults, working people, people in all professions, should not be in the hands of profiteers. Our taxpayer-funded money should be in the hands of institutions that are concerned only with educating our country, educating our workforce, and keeping America great. Now, also, if we're going to keep our general population well-educated, we have to have well-qualified, well-compensated teachers. And teachers that we have work very hard to maintain their education. Most of them have master's degrees, continue their education throughout the time that they're educating our children and our young adults, and some of us retirees, too. But there are many of these teachers, after continuing their education, when they retire, are still paying their student loans. Now, we must maintain adequate compensation for our teachers, and I don't think that an outfit that is concerned with making a profit is going to have the compensation of our educators in mind. So with this in mind, I would urge you to vote against the application for Pinecrest, which is a privately-owned corporation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Diane Desenberg, and on deck is Sandra Danu.
My name's Diane Desenberg, and I think we have a super-high-quality school system here in Sarasota. I'd like to thank you all for your work on that, and I would like to see it maintained. I'm here to talk about the Pinecrest application as well. I went and read their first couple of pages, their executive summary of their application. I noticed one of the things they said was that seven Pinecrest schools are designated as high-performing, which sounds good until you realize that they have nine schools. So that means two out of their nine schools are not high-performing. I don't see that we should welcome any school, a bunch of schools that are not high-performing in Sarasota, so I think that's a risk that we don't want to take here. We want to keep our high-performing schools here, and we don't want to invite people from out of town to bring schools that might not be high-performing. Another thing I noticed on that very first page was that they claimed there were much-needed student stations in Palmer Ranch. And I am not an education geek, so I don't know the typical jargon. A student station doesn't sound like something that we want, but I assume it means per capita spending on schools and whatnot. So if they're saying that we don't have enough schools in Palmer Ranch, that's up to you guys. I mean, if we don't have enough schools in Palmer Ranch, I hope you're looking at either increasing that or refuting that. I mean, if we have enough schools and we have enough student stations, then certainly we don't need this application. I read their mission statement, and I have to say it was sort of banal and boring. There wasn't really anything that lit me up. There wasn't anything local. There wasn't anything about Sarasota. I did see that they talked about part of their mission was ongoing assessments. To me, that's not part of a mission statement. That doesn't have-- there's no vibrancy there. There's nothing local. There's nothing about Sarasota. Basically, at that point, I thought, well, maybe I needed to follow the money and see what was going on here. These folks are from out of town. They're not from Sarasota. They see an opportunity to siphon off funds via various real estate, leasing, development, and accounting dealings, and they're going to siphon these funds into private hands. And I encourage you all to say no to this effort.
Thank you. Next, I have Sandra Danu, and on deck I have Reina Bezini. Get that finally.
Hi, I'm Sandra Danu. I have a master's in education, and I'm a representative of POPS, which is Protect Our Public Schools, in Manatee, actually. And I'm very concerned, as are other members up there, that Sarasota might start the ball rolling in terms of accepting charter schools, which don't meet the standards in any way and compete for our tax dollars. So I am here basically to make a statement that we don't want that to happen in Manatee. The conflict of interest is obvious and rampant. It's draining our public schools of taxpayer dollars, as others have said. We feel that school board members should be vetted for their interest in public education, and that public education should produce well-educated students. There's nothing that we've learned about charter schools which tells us that that is necessarily going to happen. So keep your high standards. You don't need charter schools, other than the public charter schools, which are generally, you know, high-quality and well-run, but corporate charter schools we don't need anywhere in either county. Thank you.
Thank you. Reina Bezini, and on deck is Francesca Tuliski.
We meet again. Let me start, as I always do, with thanking you for serving on the school board and listening to public comments. Many of the presenters today are speaking against the approval of Pinecrest's application. I, too, urge you to vote against it, but my focus is a bit different. The problem is much larger than one charter school's application. It's about a movement to undermine the public school system. There are two philosophies that are at war with one another. One believes the best way to educate our students is by privatizing the school system; the other that it is the public school system that is best qualified to do this. No one is claiming that the public school system is perfect. We all acknowledge that there are problems, but I feel those problems can best be fixed without demolishing the whole system. Throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if you will. Let me assure the board, Mrs. Brown and I did not collude on using that expression.
What did that expression come from?
Privatizing our school is the wrong answer to the right question. If we truly believe that all students deserve an equal opportunity to a good education, it makes sense to work within an established structure which includes all students, rather than with spin-off satellite structures which serve only a few. By funding charters, even the good ones, it drains resources from the public school system, which only exacerbates any problem, a catch-22. So as school board members, I urge you to support all of our students by supporting our public schools, and vote no on the Pinecrest application.
Thank you. Francesca Tuliski. And, okay, no problem, and Carol Lerner.
Fran said she wasn't.
I believe, yes, she passed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Lerner. I'm here as chair of POPS, as we call it, Protect Our Public Schools, Minnesota. I'm here today to urge you to vote no on the Pinecrest Academy application. Most of the reasons have already been stated, so I'm not going to go over the reasons. I have a couple of other reasons. First of all, I'm here in my red shirt, which says "enough," and that's one of my broad statements. This is enough in terms of the corporate takeover of many of our institutions in this country, education being one of them. There's a broad movement called the Corporate Reform Movement, and I think that pretty much is captured by Academica. As many people have said, Pinecrest is being managed by Academica on paper, but really it's owned by Academica. Academica is in charge from the beginning to the end. I think if we want to look at philosophies, as Rana did, I think it's critical to look at the role that education, public education, has played in the history of our country. And that is very different than the role corporations have played. They have played a role, in many cases, a positive role, but in many cases, as one person said, their bottom line is profits. And that's been the bottom line of Academica from the start. One angle that hasn't been addressed, it's very interesting to look at the application, and you see that there are nine existing Academica, or seven existing, no, I think it's nine, nine existing Academica schools. And that was over 18 years, because they were established in 2000. Now you see a list that there are seven schools that are going to be opening in one year from now. And if this application and another application in Indian County or Lake County is approved, it'll be nine. So what's going on there? It's expansionist, and it seems as though they just want more fees. The other thing that I'd like to address is that Academica has been fought. In another county, there were two Academica schools that were scheduled to be built in Indian River County, and that county actually voted against them. It then went to the State Board of Education, and the State Board of Education sided with Academica. But then it was appealed further, and the Fourth Circuit Court actually sided with the county, so there are no charter schools, no Academica charter schools in Indian River County.
Thank you very much.
I urge you to do the same and vote no.
Thank you. That completes our hearing of citizens. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda, Ms. Doctor Superintendent?
Doctor Superintendent.
Doctor Superintendent.
Yes. Item eight, approval of instructional classified personnel report. Addendum one has been added. There are also instructional reappointments for the 2018-19 school year that have been added. Item 35, approval of the interlocal agreement between the city of Sarasota and the school board of Sarasota County, Florida for vehicular and pedestrian traffic mitigation and enhanced security for Sarasota High School. At the time of publication, the attachment was not included. The attachment is now present.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Are there any comments? And if you'll bear with me one second, because we may have to do a voice vote. So, board members, all those in favor for the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously, five to zero. I did, I'm sorry, I polled items number 14 and 25 to highlight two items that were on there. The approval of the amendment to the superintendent's employment contract between the superintendent and the school board, which was only amended to push the date to July 17th as it relates to when we will get scores back, as that's a part of the evaluation. And I know--